Good evening and welcome to our Economic Development Committee meeting, the 2nd of November 2022. Acknowledgement of country. I would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging the traditional customions of the land that we're on here today, and I would like to pay my respect to both elders, past, present and emerging. Any apologies, first of all, present. We have councillor O'Connor, councillor McGee, councillor Bryce, councillor Goodwin. Any apologies besides councillor Goodsell? Councillor Marney is present also. Could I have somebody move? We accept councillor Goodsell's apology. Thank you councillor Bryce. Have a second to thank you. Thank you councillor Goodwin. All those in favour say aye. Councillor Leslie has just joined us as well, thank you. Staff reports 5.1, activation of the Seven Valleys Tourism brand. Can I have somebody move this report? Be accepted, thank you. Thank you councillor McGee.
Sorry, I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. All those in favour say aye. I'll just pass over to Mr Francis now to give a report on that, thank you.
Thank you. May I say, yeah, look, I've just put together a small PowerPoint presentation here to show the different things that have been done. So, the allocation towards maximising the activation of the Seven Valleys brand came through in October. So, a lot of the things that you'll see in this presentation are things that have just been done previous to that, and I'll talk a little bit about things that are planned over the next few months. So, the Seven Valleys logo has been developed for several months now and used on different things. As an example, a lot of the different types of logos that we have. We're also going towards the Visit Seven Valleys. Obviously, the Seven Valleys brand is evolving. We're using Visit as well so that it sounds a little bit more kind of tourism friendly, like it's it's an encouragement to come to the area. We're also about to launch the members area of the website, and one of those is to encourage the tourism members, as well as all tourism businesses in the area, to use the Seven Valleys logo on their websites. So, we've developed these, which you can see here, which are badges that can be put on on their websites. The Lithgow Visitor Information Centre has been rebranded as, that's Seven Valleys Visitor Information Centre Lithgow. So, we have the hero billboard, which is inside the visitor centre, which has the Seven Valleys logo on it now. The welcome to Seven Valleys born outside the visitor centre. And there is, yeah, a lot of signage around the visitor centre, which is basically activating that brand. When people walk in, they under no doubt that they are in the Seven Valleys. Our marketing collateral within the visitor information centre is also, as you can see on this slide, branded as Seven Valleys. We've got the two billboards at Mount Lambe and Rivallett Hill, which have been branded for some time as Seven Valleys. So, people will see those as they're passing by through the district. We have a new visitor app, which is run by the Accredited Visitor Centre Network, which we have signed up to, and that is obviously as Seven Valleys Visitor Information Centre Lithgow. So, yeah, that's seen by lots of people around the state. There's active encouragement to download that app at all visitor centres around Australia. There's been a change to all the different web-based media that people can find us with, all with search engine optimisation and management. So, we've got the Bing and the Google listings now, which make reference to Seven Valleys Visitor Information Centre Lithgow. The website has changed the domain name to sevenvalleys.com.au with Seven Valleys plastered all over it. We've also got, we've updated the listing with Destination New South Wales. So, the Visit New South Wales website, which is one of the, well, probably the most visited tourism website in Australia, has a listing for Seven Valleys. Some feedback about the Seven Valleys was that we obviously need to get it out there as to what the purpose for Seven Valleys is as part of the activation. So, on the website, this slide is what we have put on there. It can be found on the website. It is a purpose-written article about what the Seven Valleys is. So, yeah, I would encourage people to go onto the website and have a look at that one. We are developing a new membership prospectus, which is going out to all the members and non-members very, very soon with the offer of a free quarter-page advert for signing up to membership. Obviously, that again is, has the Seven Valleys branding on it, the business cards of all the staff at Seven Valleys Visitor Information Centre, again, has Seven Valleys there with the contact details. One of the first things that was done was, I was approached by the Zigzag Railway and Outback Jess, producing these Spotto books. These will be sold at the Zigzag Railway when it reopens, the visitor centre, and they're quite popular around the state. That has Seven Valleys in there, the Seven Valleys Visitor Information Centre, and a blurb on the Seven Valleys. Social media has all been updated as well, so TripAdvisor, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, all advertising Seven Valleys. We have an ongoing campaign at the moment, the video campaign for, with the Seven Valleys video, which hopefully we'll be able to play at the end. That has, yeah, it has been very, very well received and has some great numbers, and we'll be looking to add to that over the coming months with more material. Obviously, one of the biggest things for brand activation is association with other things, such as events. And two of our biggest events, which are Lithgow Halloween and Lithgow have that Seven Valleys association as well. And we put out a monthly newsletter and a monthly mail-out to the subscribers to the Seven Valleys website, which again has Seven Valleys on there. We are entering into an agreement with a TV show, Pat Cullen's Life for Adventures, and that will be branded as a Seven Valleys episode, an exclusive episode that is basically, Pat Cullen is from the Blue Mountains, from Blacksland, I believe, and so he will be pitching that as a, as a kind of his backyard episode. So, yeah, that will be a great one for activation within that target market, which is quite a big one for us. Rocky Trail Entertainment that holds the Jet Black 24 Hour. They, this year, are hosting the Australian Cycling 24 Hour Solo National Championships, and they will be advertising that as being within the Seven Valleys. And just recently as well, we had the Australian Caravan Club attend in Lithgow at the showground, and that event was entitled the Seven Valleys Master. And the organising committee said that they saw great merit in the Seven Valleys brand and were delighted to title it as the Seven Valleys Master. So, yeah, what I have on screen here are the things that we have in production now. They're not quite ready. So, we have our own marquees, we have the visitor guide, which will hopefully be produced in the next couple of months. We've got the teardrop flags, the flags that will go on the, on flag piles around Lithgow, Portland and Waleroang, souvenirs for the visitor centre, and pull-up banners as well. So, lots of marketing collateral that will be able to be taken to things like trade shows and other places to advertise the Seven Valleys. This shows the power of events. This is just an indication of the month of October and the amount of interest generated by Lithgow Halloween. And so therefore, yeah, it's an indication of how much exposure has been, the Seven Valleys brand has had because of that. So, on our website alone, 21,000 unique page, oh sorry, 18,000 unique page views, 21,000 actual views, and social media, 98,000 reach for Lithgow Halloween. So, and as you'll see in a minute, that what we were advertising was the video for Lithgow Halloween. So, yeah, this is the Lithgow Halloween video. Sorry. So, that video was shown on One Win and Channel 7 for a three-week period, and yeah, was, yeah, widely watched. And the other one that we have on rotation on our social media channels at the moment is this video. A lot of stock footage that we have retained from previous years has gone into that, on working with local photographers and videographers to get more creative assets in that space. Otherwise, the other things that we're doing are looking at working with the steering committee, the tourism steering committee, to develop a destination management plan that will provide a focus to the local industry to sell the Seven Valleys. Obviously, there's encouragement to any new businesses to use that, to leverage off that Seven Valleys brand as well, which I am encouraged to hear some whisperings of people that are looking to do that, which is great. So, yeah, I think they are examples of how we are activating the Seven Valleys brand at the moment.
Thank you, Mr Francis. That was an excellent report, and I can see that, you know, the activation of what you're doing, Seven Valleys, is definitely working. I'm going to go back now to the mover of that motion, councillor McGee, and then come back to councillor Goodwin, and then people can then take part in, if you would like to discuss any or anything to do with that particular section of our meeting tonight. Councillor McGee?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Statham. Yeah, that's really well done, looking really good. I think that it could work in well with the, when you get a copy of the one that the caravan people did. They did a cracker one as well, just sort of focused a bit more on an example of each of the valleys, and worked really well. Certainly got the people in the caravan area excited to go and see and visit each individual valley. So, yeah, that was good, but you're on the right track, definitely.
Councillor Goodwin?
Thank you, Mayor Statham. The Seven Valleys brand was a fantastic initiative from the Lithgow Council. For most of the council could see the brand would bring tourism and a talking point to the Lithgow area. Some of the councillors couldn't see this until the last couple of days, until speaking to people from outside the Lithgow area, but I'm glad they see it now. It just makes me wonder what else these councillors can't see for the future of Lithgow until it's introduced and doing well. Maybe it's just old thinking or no forward visioning for anything, but maybe they're scared to change. But I love the branding. It brings a talking point to the Lithgow area, and it gives people some imagination of what's in these areas, and it increases tourism. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. The general manager has suggested that I'll suspend standing orders, and that if you feel like asking a question just casually, or a question to Mr Francis, feel free to do that. So, councillor O'Connor?
I just got a question on the, that big sign in this side of Mount Lambe. It's of Donkey Mountain. Surely, we could put something better there for show off some of the valleys, or show off something than a big lump of rock, if you get my meaning. Thank you.
It was chosen, obviously, for the visual appeal, and it does obviously show down into the Walgren Valley, so that is one of the valleys. But, yeah, we're looking to evolve the, you know, those market offerings all the time. We also, what I failed to mention in my presentation there was, the other activation part is that we're looking to put some LGA signage, so that when people drive in, a lot of people, obviously, driving, increasing amount of people are driving to the Seven Valleys to partake in all the different things there are to see and do, because it takes so long to get around and see it. They need far more than just one or two days to do that. But should they be driving through to Orange or Mudgee or Bathurst, then they will have, yeah, no doubts as to where the Seven Valleys starts and ends, because, yes, I intend to, very economically but very visibly, put signposts on the borders of the LGA that say welcome to and thank you for visiting the Seven Valleys.
Councillor Bryce?
No, I was just going to talk about getting some signage on the road to Mudgee as well and the road back to Mudgee, because the traffic through there is quite intense on weekends and even during the week. So, it'd be good for them to be able to see what else is at Lithgow rather than drive through but actually stop. I'm pretty excited about the Seven Valleys. It's, you know, it's a great idea encompassing a whole of Lithgow rather than just Lithgow and the whole LGA. It's a bit like the Hunter Valley, how it encompasses quite a few LGAs within the Hunter Valley, which is a really, everyone, you know, when you go to the Hunter Valley, you go to the Hunter Valley, but it could be Cessnock, Muscle Brook, Maitland, you know, wherever they are. But coming to the Seven Valleys, it's still within our LGA, really good programme.
Any wishing to make a comment?
Just a brief comment. Just a mechanical thing. I've been approached by a number of people around the copyrighting of it. So, for instance, someone's interested in Seven Valley produce. How do we manage that? I, like all the councillors who have spoken, agree it's a really great initiative, and I've spoken to this before, and, you know, it's got links back into lots of old stories, whether it's the Seven Sisters stories, or the going back in the Greek mythology, all that sort of stuff. So, there's some great imagery evokes. So, I agree with what's been said earlier, but as people adopted as a brand and as a value, is that brand owned by anyone? That's, that's just a question.
Mr Francis?
Well, the brand has been developed by the Lithgow City Council, but obviously, that is developed for the benefit and fulfillment of the people within the local government area. And so, yeah, we currently have people in the local government area leveraging off other brands. Ideally, yeah, I would like to see people leveraging off that Seven Valleys brand. So, yeah, look, we have put a copyright on the logo itself that can be used for tourism purposes. We will allow that to be used, and we want that, you know, that identification. The Seven Valleys branding is being very carefully handled, so that the tourism signs, the tourism entry signs that I mentioned, the LGA entry signs, will be designed to fit look and feel with the website, with the visitor guide, with the in-house marketing collateral, and with any additional interpretive signage and directional signage that may be forthcoming in future years around the local government area. So, yeah, look, really, in answering your question, councillor Marney, yes, definitely would encourage people to be using the term Seven Valleys, particularly for tourism purposes, yes.
Just one other quick question. Given a lot of the emphasis on natural features and ecotourism, I know I've spoken to this previously, but can we look into nature-based recreation licensing and ecotourism licensing where our reserves are being utilized for commercial purposes? Because I think, I share most people's view that the tourism numbers are going to increase, and whilst they're very modest in most councils that apply them, they're really just about setting standards for practice and very minimal fees. But it does bring a small income into the council. If I could ask, as time permits, that maybe that'd be booked out.
Thank you councillor Marney. Something that I would like, Mr Francis, to look into, we have a very good relationship with Bathurst Council and their staff. The World Cross Country Championships are on in Bathurst next year, and I feel very sure that a lot of people after they've run will want to spend time in our areas, and it'd be nice for us to capture that as opposed to Orange or out further west. So, that's something I'd urge you to look at. That's coming up, sort of May-June, I think. They're talking about accommodation and all kinds of things at the moment. So, the Seven Valleys would be, I don't know how you'll go about doing that, but it'd be worthwhile looking into.
Sorry, Mayor Statham.
Yes, the Australian Cross Country Championships are being held in Bathurst next year, and I know lots of people that are coming to Australia, and I know a lot of people around our area that are going to be, you know, making lots of money from this. So, we need to be able to provide Bathurst Council, you know, we get on very well with our neighbours. So, I think we need to be able to discuss with them opportunities moving forward to discuss the Seven Valleys with their, you know, along with the Bathurst, how they will promote their tourism. I'm quite sure they'll be quite happy to include us if we have some sort of arrangement made in the very near future.
Mayor Statham, can I just say one thing through to Simon or to the staff? The signage coming into Lithgow where it says Lithgow, I think it says Waleroang and different areas, that signage is starting to become a little bit out there, I think, run down. It looks, like it looks weathered, and, yeah, certain areas looks really terrible. Maybe we could, if we're looking at fixing them, maybe fixing with the branding of Seven Valleys or Lithgow Seven Valleys or something, in relation to something that really stands out, and especially coming into the two parts of Lithgow from the east and the west.
The general manager, myself and Mr Edgcombe, have visited the jail in Kirkconnell Prison Farm, and the signage, I'd all like you to have a look at the signage outside the correctional centre. At Merengaro, it's amazing. They do that, and that's on our agenda for next year. It's been on the agenda this year, but there's been floods, floods and more floods, and we can only do what we can do. But that's certainly something. They've got a very reputable landscape gardener there at the moment, who has serviced palaces and castles in England. So, he's here in Lithgow living, and we've already had some meetings, and it's gone very well. Thank you.
Through you, ma'am. The signage is not just at Lithgow. It has to be like, I go to Cullen every day, and the sign at Cullen Bullon is horrendous. You can't even read Cullen Bullon. You know, it doesn't, it needs to be from all sides as well.
We have a plan, and I think at the moment the RMS had to come on board. They've definitely come on board. We've signed a memorandum of understanding, as we have done with the jail, and there will be all the villages eventually. One's as important as the other, but the three that'll be done first will be Lithgow, Waleroang and Portland. And then after, we're going to see if we can cooperate with progress associations and get our branding all done the same. Thank you for those questions. It's great. We'll move on now to, councillor McGee?
Yeah, I'd just like to also add that I think a very special thank you and congratulations should go to Kerry and Larry Pitts from Good Forest for the amount of work that they did in getting the Seven Valleys brand up and running and registering it and things like that, and then handing all of that information over to council very early in the piece. They did a tremendous amount of work, and I think it's very important that they do get recognition for that. Also, is there something that we can do with the information centre, even if it's reflected or something? But that sign, you can't read it, you know, like is there a way to get it turned around so that people driving past, like I'm, I've never been able to read that sign, and I'm the driver, but, yeah, I couldn't look left that long enough to read that.
I presume you're talking about the digital sign? Is that correct? Yeah, look, we'll certainly investigate it. I know at the time, the sign itself cost $11,000, I believe. That was, yeah, probably about 10 years ago. Obviously, the problem is that it needs to be viewed from both directions. So, yeah, we can kind of angle it, I suppose, but then you're not going to be able to see it from, you know, a certain direction. But, yeah, definitely take that, you know, question on, and investigate some ways of making sure that it can be seen better, if possible.
I totally understand that, and the general manager knows my feeling on that. And Jonathan, Mr Edgcombe, it needs to be so that it's double-sided, or we put up with that until we can find something better. Thank you for that. I'll close that part of the meeting now and move on to the next item. Thank you. Very good presentation, Mr Francis. 5.2, Lithgow Emerging Economy Project. Can I have somebody move that? Thank you. Councillor Bryce, have a second to thank you. Thank you councillor Marney. We'll do the same what we've done before, because we've suspended standing orders. I've got a mover and a seconder. So, we'll ask Mr Edgcombe now to deliver some information regarding this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Statham. Do we have a presentation?
Yep.
I just can't see it.
Mayor Statham, I've got a message saying that people can't see the presentations of the website. Okay.
So, I'll do my very best.
Can we just explain that for the public?
So, just for the public viewing, we do apologise, but in a technology sense, we're not able this evening to display the presentations that the councillors are seeing within the building. We'll post them on the website tomorrow. We do apologise. So, with respect to the LEAP project, I'm going to present three brief presentations this afternoon, and both of them are interlinked. We're at a very important time of Lithgow's future. We are, you know, in the wake of the Waleroang closure, and there are announcements on a regular basis regarding the future of coal mining and power stations across Australia and New South Wales. So, our diversification and transition away from coal and coal-related industries is a very topical discussion. But there are also a lot of moving parts. We're working directly with the Department of New South Wales, Regional New South Wales. uh with the Department of New South Wa- Regional New South Wales, who are the predominant funder of this project, and we thank them significantly for their investment in our region, but we're also working directly with uh members of our local industry and community also to engage on on the LEAP project. Uh but with respect to the Lithgow Emerging Economy Project, uh wh- where are we at currently? Um the 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 project itself, it comprises five separate parts. Uh the first of those is an assessment of where the Lithgow region is today in terms of its uh of its uh economic, um what would you call it, its current economic activity, but also its demographics and what its industry breakdown looks like. Additionally, uh this part of the report considers the current social and cultural mindsets of Lithgow's workforce and community and the core skills that they can offer industries of the future. Uh with this understanding of the industry breakup, this first phase of the report considers the potential future scenarios um uh and the impact of, uh so the current strengths of our economy and the impact of shocks to those industries in the future. Uh essentially, this is an assessment of today's position. Uh the second phase of the report considers where we're, where Lithgow is headed if there is to be no intervention and we take a do-nothing approach. Uh this analyzes a uh an array of potential future industries, including their output, uh job creation potential and infrastructure reuse opportunities. Um alongside the consideration of that do-nothing scenario, uh we also consider the uh a converse approach, which is uh direct government and industry and private industry and local government uh intervention in the process and uh the potential for a focused approach with respect to that intervention. The the report considers what uh potential um potential diversification scenarios, uh with a distinct focus on how Lithgow can retain local value from those assets post, uh any new assets or existing assets post-construction, uh engagement with local stakeholders and the overlay of existing strategies developed by the New South Wales Government, such as their energy transition strategies and policy frameworks. Uh it also, in in a large part, considers what's necessary for a just transition. Uh what I mean by just transition is considering the livelihoods of members of our community, not just jobs, and acknowledging that the negative impacts of a transition or of a diversification effort can impact those most most vulnerable in our community. And and it it considers what's needed to address those needs on a broad scale. So essentially, that's what tomorrow looks like. Uh the third phase of the report is what's needed to address that gap between phase one and two, where we are now, and where we're, where we could be headed tomorrow if we take the right um intervention measures. Included in this section are considerations of how to make best of Lithgow's um natural capital assets, those include our water supplies and environmental assets, as we've just saw regarding the Seven Valleys, uh how they can be used to support tourism, for example, and infrastructure reuse opportunities with a with a key focus on Lithgow's existing assets in terms of uh energy production and the demand for new infrastructure investment. Um notably, a key part of that will be the uh Great Western Highway upgrade uh in terms of transport infrastructure. Um and thirdly, uh this phase of the document, yeah, uh considers the demand for social infrastructure. If we're to engage with workforces of the of the future and attract people into our region, we need to consider how we're to supply the necessary social infrastructure, um make um uh good consideration of place-making, uh development of precinct plans for those separate areas of our LGA and our sporting precincts and the like, and the best use of those land endowments that we have at our disposal. All of that is tied up into a proposed vision statement of the Lithgow economy. Uh and the fourth and fifth stages of the report consider the key enablers and the plan of action to address them. So by enablers, I'm talking about things like uh education programs to upskill our community, uh the uh construction of water pipelines to service heavy industrial lands, um to uh or 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 um uh as we saw the Seven Valleys a moment ago, again, um uh tourism um strategies to enhance our tourism economy and attract workers and visitors to our region. They are the key enablers and the plan of action subsequent uh addresses what's required of local government, private industry and uh federal and state governments to assist us to meet our vision in terms of diversifying our economy. So in terms of where we're at at the moment, uh we're currently in the middle of phase three, which is determining what's needed. So we've identified that there are an array of um an array of industries which could be uh focused on to to support Lithgow's um transition and diversification efforts, but uh the the we're currently in the process of of process of identifying those enablers and consulting and commu- and communicating those with industry, government and our community. In terms of the baseline analysis, which is phase one of the report, which we've recently completed, um we have a set of baseline findings which have, which have really informed where Lithgow's at at the moment and um set the scene for where those enablers and resultant actions lie. For example, we know that Lithgow's population has shrunk between one and two percent between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-one. And our projections have the population expected to plateau with an aging demographic. This isn't just a a a a a negative, this could be a positive as it uh gives a precursor for the identification of health precincts and and industries uh to support our aging population. We've also identified that there is a significant socio-economic disadvantage across the LGA when compared to New South Wales with a slightly higher disadvantage in the Lithgow township than the Lithgow region. Uh the uh the people of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander descent make up seven point eight percent of the population, while only six point two percent spend, speak a language other than English at home. Uh unemployment, until recently, unemployment in Lithgow has been high relative to regional New South Wales and New South Wales as a whole. With low unemployment, the workforce for growing or emerging industries may need to be drawn from existing industries or attracted from outside the LGA. And generally, it appears that housing is more affordable in Lithgow than the wider state, including regional New South Wales. I apologise for the small text, um but uh as as I mentioned earlier, alongside the demographics, the baseline considers our economic profile as well. Um in short, uh Lithgow's value add is highly concentrated in coal mining and electricity supply. Uh this uh clearly suggests that our economy is vulnerable to these shocks and these subsectors. Additionally, the tourism industry is not a current major contributor, however, offerings and activity mix undertaken are similar to the Blue Mountains. Uh and there's also been significant uh eh commitment to investment in the Lithgow LGA, notably the fifty million dollars Gardens of Stone proposal, uh through which we're working very closely with National Parks and Wildlife Services to to ensure that that project sees as much value uh added to the Lithgow region as humanly possible. Uh and so, third, Lithgow's employment is concentrated in healthcare and social assistance, mining, public administration and safety. Uh to us, this suggests that the economy is vulnerable to the shocks in these sectors, but if supported, they could also act as uh uh almost the backbone to the Lithgow LGA and offer some sort of longevity and and uh long long-term support. So in terms of the baseline findings, uh s- uh assuming a do-nothing approach, uh there are significant workforce impacts and social impacts. These really speak to the need for Lithgow to uh, it speaks to the need of the LEAP project generally. Uh it it's, we we are at a at a crucial point in our future and targeted intervention is required if if we're to uh influence significant change over the next ten years. So workforce impacts, uh if if our mines were to to close overnight, and uh there there's the potential loss of over nine hundred jobs. Uh there's a large, and of those, there is a large proportion of high-paying jobs and and an industry-specific skilled workforce behind it. And the potential flow and impacts could result in a shrinkage of the wider economy by roughly two two thousand jobs. And in terms of the social impact, um those jobs aren't just jobs, they're people. They are people in our in our LGA and they are, it would result in a changing depen- demographic if our mining workers were to move away from Lithgow. Um mining workers represent a younger and la- and larger households than are average in the LGA. Uh we would inevitably uh suffer the loss of worker contributions to the community and and those companies who offer themselves significant contributions to our community, whether it be financially or otherwise. So that moves into us into um phase two and three, which, as I mentioned before, uh the these aspects of the report identify some key industries that uh in our view, uh the the this council uh and our government and private industry could focus on if we're to uh diversify our economy and 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 move from strength to strength. At the moment, uh all of the advice that we've received in the research conducted points to three major growth sectors. Uh those are electricity, gas, water and waste services. Uh the key points in that area are that uh we have significant existing electricity, transport and I uh IT resources in the Lithgow uh LGA. We also have um volumes of natural endowments, including water resources and the ability to generate electricity from solar. And we have a workforce with transferable skills. Uh the potential there essentially is to um pivot from coal fired fire power and electricity generation to renewables, including the development of solar power, pumped hydro, battery storage and uh green hydrogen generation for um transport networks of the future. Uh the second suggested or or potential growth sector is manufacturing. Uh Lithgow, regardless of its transition, will always have a strong heritage and history as a centre of industrial innovation and manufacturing. Uh that's something that we can't lose sight of, um and there is significant um uh potential for us to move into uh clean manufacturing uh opportunities, including uh defence and metal fabrication, uh renewable energy component manufacturing as well, uh and as well as circu- circular economy manufacturing and transport. Uh additionally, uh we have, similar to the electricity um industry, we have a workforce with transferable skills and we have good links to transport infrastructure, including our proximity to both Western Sydney and the Central West to uh facilitate that industry as well. And third, uh tourism, uh I won't rehash a lot of what um Simon just mentioned, but we uh it's, we have an abundance of natural assets. Um we we also recognise the significance of our indigenous uh heritage assets that are that are located throughout our broad LGA. And there's a s- a a lack of saturation, we have things that not many, uh no one else has, we have our Seven Valleys, for example. And third, uh again, they're the proximity to Sydney to complement uh our neighbouring regions. Lastly, there are, I mentioned a second ago, the key foundational sectors. Those are sectors which already exist but have the potential, if if supported with um targeted uh intervention, have the ability to um continue to grow and further support Lithgow in the future. Our healthcare and aging social assistance industry uh is established and well-integrated within our existing community. And there's a high, there's, uh as I mentioned in the previous demographic slide, there's a high and increasing demand for those services, including from our existing aging population. Uh and second, there are public administration and safety. Um we we have, uh there's an established existing industry, including statewide public services, state debt and the Correctional Centre, for example. We have good geographic positioning with respect to our central centrality uh with the Sydney Basin and the Central West. And uh there are cost advantages, being our cheaper land and uh construction for um relative to Sydney. So where to from here? Um as I mentioned, we're we're most of the way through phase three and we're heading into phase four and five, which are the identification of the key enablers and what that plan of action will look like. There are a number of stakeholders which uh must buy in to those enablers and those, that plan of action, which necessitates that we communicate, consult and workshop this strategy as broadly as possible. So, moving forward, while it was unfortunate, um there, we have organised and will continue to organise an industry government workshop where we aim to bring in uh leaders from our um uh from local businesses and local industry and and combine them with with the pillars of um the bureaucracy of um state government and the like to 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 workshop those enablers, uh consider where they fall short or what their strengths are and to to in attempt to um get buy-in as to what those are, whose responsibility falls where, and how we can work together to deliver those mutual outcomes for the Lithgow community. Uh there's also to be a series of two community information forums. Um we aim to have those relatively small, roughly twenty to thirty participants, so that we can engage directly, but we also look to to speak directly to those pillars of our community, be it um the heads of sporting organisations, um the 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 Lithgow Chamber of Commerce, we look forward to directly engaging with them on this project, and any of those other community groups that offer um that are very in touch with with their representative communities. From those two or three sessions, um there'll be a collation of those findings into final reports, at which point there will be direct engagement and more detail provided to the council. Then there'll be a final peer review, um which has occurred throughout each stage of the process to date. We we have um engaged directly with experts in the field, notably Neil Perry from uh uh who is, who is an associate professor at the Western Sydney University. He's provided us with extremely valuable information and we thank him very much for his efforts. And uh ideally, um this project would have been completed in November, but there have been a couple of delays and we feel that it's important to engage deeply rega- regarding the project, but also review the findings to date to make sure that they're sound and um academically rigorous, so uh eh idea, uh final completion, we expect at this point to be around January, February, but uh that has not yet been um nailed down uh uh exactly. So post-completion, uh once the project's been developed, um eh we we aim to plan early for closure and change and introduce and have clear leadership in this process through those community consultation workshops and information forums. Uh we hope to have um the si- uh the adequate buy-in from state and federal government, but also those partnerships in place so that we can work together and uh shape Lithgow's economy uh in the best way for the future. Um importantly, uh this will take time. Uh research from the Grattan Institute and the Australian Productivity Commission uh demonstrates that uh successful transitions take up to ten years to reach their end result. And there's significant financial investment that is attached to that as well, so it's imperative that we it it's it's good that we've started now, but we must press ahead with some urgency. Uh as I mentioned before, there needs to be a mix of public and private investment. Uh we all need to work together to achieve these outcomes. And we need to make sure that there's inclusion and equity, that just transition discussion that I mentioned before. And lastly, um given the in- industrial nature of our existing industry, uh we need to make sure that the rehabilitation of our environment can proceeds in in a, in a environmentally sustainable manner that uh is 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 most beneficial for ge- employment generation into the future. So I think that's it for the LEAP project.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one point drawing from Jonathan's presentation, I thought that was great, Jonathan, thank you. Um uh we're planning early, um we're not planning for early closures. Um the situation is um that Energy Australia uh publicly committed that Mount Piper will run till twenty forty and the sporting coal mines similarly. Um but uh we know um that uh the transformation of an economy uh is complex uh and lengthy in duration. Uh and uh we're hoping that we're going early, um but perhaps we're not. It's another day, so every other day you hear about reforms in the energy space. Uh we can't wait, around forty percent of our, the value created in this city is created. Uh, we can't wait, around forty percent of our, the value created in this city is created from mining and energy generation. So we want to plan early and implement early, uh, because it will be a multi-year. Uh, re- um, programme and requiring significant investment. And uh, you know, we need the private sector, federal, state and local council. Uh, all pulling on the one, on the one uh rope. Uh, that rope we hope is the action plan, I'm quite excited about the work that's being done. Uh, the, the deep thinking that's going into it, um, the fact that we're very much looking. Uh, to play to Lithgow's unique strength, it's too often the case. Um, and this speaks to some other reports later in this committee, uh, that a council boasts that they have these attributes uniquely. Um, that's not the case very often, um, so we're very much making sure that it's grounded in uh Lithgow's endowments. It's agnostic to sectors, uh, we really want to play to those endowments, then provide the supporting infrastructure. And we want to play a short term, a medium term and a long term game and uh take uh all of the community with us. We need to be investing more vigorously by way of example in uh, in the, uh, in our schools. Um, and we need to be ensuring uh that the schools and the children emerging from those schools have the skills. That will equip them for the future, not for the past. Um, so it's a really deep process, a deep dive, um, and I look forward to um reporting back on the next stages. But I just wanted to particularly start with making that point, that we're planning early, not planning for early closures, um, thank you.
Thank you to the General Manager, thank you, Mr Edgcombe, it was a terrific report. Um, you moved the motion, Council Bryce, would you like to speak to that? And I'll put the motion after we've done that, we'll have discussions.
Um, I'm really excited about this project and moving forward, it was a great presentation. Um, you know, Lithgow has a lot of potential and it's, and I'd be lovely to see that being used. Um, at one of our information sessions, the resources for rejuvenation was committees and that. Is that gonna be part of this LEAP programme?
Through you, Ms Statham, all, all opportunities proposed by government, the, the, thi- this is a, 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 a document. That's going to be grounded in, in reality, it's going to be very pragmatic in its approach. So any diversification init- initiatives proposed by the government, whether it be uh investment initiatives like. The resource, uh royalties for rejuvenation or otherwise, are going to be deeply embedded in this. So that uh when those levers and uh enablers are identified, that we have the means to make them a reality.
Uh, Council Marnie?
Um, just to reiterate, Council Bryce's comments here look a really well presented. Um, overview on where this is going. Um, it was full of some really important trends and I, I appreciated that you've recognised the employment trends. And as with some of the groups that are moving forward, such as health and particular aged care. And although there, there's those risks carried for the mining sector, I was pleased it wasn't just a report about statistic and data. I really appreciated the commentary on the human and social impacts of the loss of the mining. Sectors, workers and their roles in community life. Um, it's not simply we learn, lose economic value, but we also lose important social and community uh participation. So, the other, the other point I'd, I'd like to make, I've watched some of the transitional processes going on in other areas, such as the Latrobe Valley and so on. I think we've got to be careful of things not being linear and sequential, that we wait for something to happen to respond. I prefer the concept of divi- diversification rather than transition. Because diversification can happen at any time during the economy, it doesn't wait for an impending collapse to start the process, so. Um, and, and your presentation spoke to that, um, at looking at some of the emerging opportunities in our economy, so, thank you.
Uh, I'm going to put the motion and we'll have a discussion, thank you.
Good, I'd like to be able to speak to the motion before it's put.
All right, no worries at all.
Uh, Lithgow Emerging Economic Project, I think this actually could have a subheading called. How to Transition to the Future. And. And I'd like to congratulate the, the writers of it, the author of it, uh, Mr Edgcombe. Uh, for actually, although the word, although there's no specific item in this report dealing specifically with transition. It's, it's inherent right through the whole document. You, the, the word transition appears, you know, four or five times, the transitioning appears, uh, and. And this is, this is a wonderful change for Lithgow Council, with only a few years ago, the very word transition would. Would bring howls of rage, you know, from, from some of our former councillors. Uh, but along with the word climate change in, in the wider community. The word transition is now an acceptable concept in our, in our society. It's, it's so important because without acknowledging the, the necess- the necessity for it. You know, no change can happen, uh, but once you acknowledge it, then the whole mindset changes. And you, and every, every time you, you wish to think about what should we do next or how do we do it? Even without the word, the process is there. And, and I appreciated uh Council Marnie's comment, which he actually used another word, diversification. Now, that's so important too, I hadn't, uh, hadn't realised that, I'm not always at the forefront of these things. I, I like these, these uh committees, so that you can actually catch up with some of the issues and concepts that. You know, that are outside my own personal experience. But it's, it's, it's very valuable to me and, and I think this um Lithgow Emerging Economy Project is a very valuable tool. And, and I. And I really do support the, the work that's been done with it.
Thank you, Council Wesley. Um, anybody else wishing to discuss something or ask a question? Council McGee?
Yes, we've just had the um, a big amalgamation between a Melbourne firm and a English firm. Who um convert older cars to electric EVs, pure EVs. And I really think that that's part of the future, you know, and I was just sort of wondering as far as manufacturing and. Uh, recycling solar panels and manufacturing um electric motors and generators. Which would also go into not only EVs but also pumped hydro. Um. Will we, like, what sort of opportunities would we be able to offer companies? In the future, like to attract them to, to do these works in Lithgow?
A- a- as I mentioned earlier, the, the report is almost entirely agnostic to industry. So it's, we're not targeting anybody in particular, it really is trying to sell Lithgow and every, everything that it has to offer. And let the industry choose to come here. Um, but in terms of existing infrastructure, you're right, um, the, our, our. Uh, Australia is shifting towards renewables and uh clean energy and, and, and clean tra- transport, for example. Um, so, so the, the report is, uh, those aspects are deeply embedded within it, it's not just. Uh, for example, hydrogen conversion, but we're also looking at opportunities to repurpose existing rail assets, for example, to run on that. Hydrogen power, um, because we have disused or, 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 um. Uh, we have rail assets locally that could be repurposed for those purposes, i- if the industry sees that there's an opportunity there. So again, it's not, we're trying not to be specific, because if we put all of our winners in one basket and that fails. Then the document falls flat and we, and we fall in the same trap as many other uh diversification efforts have in the past. We really need to stay as open as possible, so that we can focus on what. Uh, what actions are required to push Lithgow into the future and let the industry choose. And, and so, and then market those o- opportunities to the industry accordingly.
So just to add to that, um, so yeah, we're really focused on those enablers and then, um, then the market determines based upon. Um, those enablers are matching their, their, their needs and wants. Um, so by way of example with the, the, the one that you're speaking about, so um, a skilled workforce, um. Uh, apprentices, a motivated workforce, um, power, affordable land, zoned land. Um, so these are the things that are the enablers. And then yes, you, you may be attractive to uh an industry that's repurposing vehicles under your example. Um, but uh we stand on this side of the counter, we don't develop companies and businesses and new sectors. So if you have the, the ecosystem of your city right, well then the sectors hopefully, and you market it. The sectors find their way to you. I think the other final secret sauce um goes into the nature of the local government body. And the council are being open for business, um, and uh having a can-do attitude. And uh being an honourable partner with businesses wanting to locate in their city, there's not enough made of that, I believe. Um, and, and I think uh that gives confidence uh to people to invest also.
Thank you. Uh, now, uh, before I go to your write-up reply, would anyone else like to have, uh, anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, um, I would be encouraging the likes of Greenspot. Because if any industry wants to come here at the moment, where do you put them? There is no block of industrial land anywhere in this side of the town. So without industrial land and heavy industrial or whatever, there is no place to put anybody. And that's all I'm saying, it should be encouraged through a economic development manager. That's pushing these people to get everything happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Connor, General Manager.
Oh yes, you're absolutely right, and I'm segueing between uh Mr Edgcombe and myself here, but drawing from my experience. Um, yes, and uh, uh, please be excited about the LEAP exercise, because I, I believe that the action plan will canvass all of these issues. And it's long been said to me that if you start today, um, with land that requires rezoning, it can be. Uh, no less than, um, let me say six to eight years before you'll be turning a sod on a new development that requires that rezoning. By the way, you find, time you find your way through the planning system, DA, uh, capital funding, uh, and the like. So they're long timeframes, so we uh, we believe um that uh the LEAP uh project will lead to. Uh, calling for a range of opportunity sites across the city. But also working with government to see how we can compress down that timeframe, so that it's not six to eight years. We want to flatten, we want to provide the enabling infrastructure, work with government. And squash down that, that process to turn on uh land that's currently unzoned. But we do have numerous brownfield sites and alongside of the Greenspot site, we surely looms as an opportunity site. Uh, and we're hopeful that the LEAP inspires uh government and the private sector uh to uh, to look at bringing those forward.
Any other councillor, Council Goodwin?
Yeah, Ms Statham, I see it's a really good um initiative in the medium and the long term. However, the short term, we need to look at what's here and now, potentially ready to go. Um, very happy with the LEAP project and, and getting on to it very early, um, that's extremely exciting. Um, I know it's a very holistic document, I'd like to see us target businesses that we know of in the area. That are ready to go or potentially ready to go in the very short term, acknowledge it in the document maybe. And target businesses in the medium and long term to attract businesses, uh, in the medium term and to attract businesses in the long term. Uh, but I'm glad to hear that the General Manager did, did acknowledge and talk about this in his uh summing up for the short, medium and long term, so.
Thank you, Council Goodwin, and just before I put the motion or ask Council Bryce if she'd write a, write a reply. I have suggested to the General Manager that we should contact um the federal government through um Andrew G. Because they've made some announcements about two months ago, I think, to uh say there's quite some funding for TAFE courses. And to do with the TAFE, so I think that we should be trying to get people upskilled as quickly as possible. For example, a young gentleman from Portland, I was speaking to him about three months ago and he was doing plastering. And he wanted to do it locally, he was unable to do that, he went to Kootumbur. He did his course, he came back and now he's in business and he has run off his feet, and I believe his work is excellent. So you know, I think we should be able to get uh something to help promote other courses at the TAFE besides the ones that are that. We know, grateful for the ones that are there, but we need now to look into people that are going to be able to build all these homes. Uh, in the event that these subdivisions around our local government area take place. And of course, uh, with the road coming through, we'll need new homes quite quickly. Um, Council Bryce, would you like to have a write-up reply?
Yeah, um, uh, um, I'm excited about this LEAP project, I came to Lithgow quite a few years, um, when I was sixteen. I managed to get an apprenticeship as a fellow machinist within four months of starting, I worked at the Small Arms Factory in manufacturing. It was a great place, so many skills, so many skilled people, and we lost that over the years. So to see that manufacturing will make, hopefully make a comeback in our LGA and the skills that comes with that. As well as any other industry that comes, you know, healthcare and aged care and all that, all brings sets of skills. We are, we, we should be targeting semi-skilled and skilled workforce, and which will be the great thing about this LEAP project.
Hmm, right, well said, Council Marnie, uh, I'll put the motion on as in favour, say aye. Carrie, thank you. Point three, review of the Lithgow Regional Economic Development Strategy, again, Mr Edgcombe, thank you. Yeah, I'll have a mover, thank you. Thank you, Council Bryce, uh, a second, thank you, Council O'Connor, thank you. Mr Edgcombe, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Statham, I will try to keep this one a little more brief than the last, because I don't want anybody getting sick of my voice. But, too late, um, so as I mentioned before, there's a great deal going on in the, uh. In, uh, at the moment regarding Lithgow's future and its economic outlook. Uh, in particular, uh, alongside the LEAP, there's the state government, the Department of Regional New South Wales are working to review. Our regional economic development strategy. The first of these was uh cr- uh written in twenty eighteen. And it, it really, uh, uh, focused uh at a, a level called uh FERS, they call them functional economic regions. Uh, each, that these uh functional economic regions are, are identified. Uh, based on where people travel for work, um, the, the local geography. And a study of uh local supply chains that feed into our re- our local industries. Lithgow is an outlier in this respect, because we are one of the very few who, which, uh, where the LGA. Uh, directly aligns with the functional economic region, so we are standalone in that respect. We have our own regional economic development strategy. And it's come at a very good time for us to, uh, for, for the doc- this document to be reviewed. Because it directly aligns with the Lithgow Emerging Economy Plan. Uh, because the two documents in many ways attempt to achieve the same thing and, and do. Um, i- i- the, the, the regional economic development strategy, eh, um. Uh, is produced based on data analysis predominantly from the Australian Bureau of Statistics, but also has input from stakeholder workshops. Uh, ca- sorry, council submissions and local business surveys. And this input really ensures that the update reflects the local perspectives on the future of the region. Plus any changes which may have occurred, um, environmentally, economically or otherwise in terms of infrastructure investment. Um, i- in a local sense, and aims to reflect that and the impacts on our economic outlook. Uh, the, the reason why it's important that the REDS um review aligns with LEAP is that that. The regional economic development strategy in particular provides the evidence base for government. Uh, to, to make policy and investment decisions, thereby providing a pathway for their own investment. To in, in the growth of industries that drive Lithgow's economy and jobs. Um, and it's also important that we review this on a, some, on a regular basis, because it's important that both documents. Uh, I did, uh, acknowledge the fact that recent, Regional New South Wales has endured a number of shocks over the last four years in particular. Um, uh, my memory goes back to the twenty nineteen bushfire and the impacts that had on our environment. And our, and our residents and our businesses, and the floods that we're expecting now. Um, you know, we have five current natural disasters and that continues to, to, um, you know, cr- uh, create. Challenges for, for our residents and our, and our industry. Covid nineteen, mouse plagues, um, but alongside those, there are other economic opportunities. Covid nineteen, mouse plagues, um but alongside those, there are other economic opportunities. Uh as I mentioned before, the state government's uh committed fifty thousand, fifty million dollars to the Gardens of Stone and its development. And council's working very closely to make sure that there are good local outcomes as a result of that project. And there's the Great Western Highway also. Um but it's also um a private industry that's had significant investment in our region. The Lithgow Transformation Hub has has um Craig mentioned a moment ago that we need to look to our workforces and and uh tra- uh provide additional skills to the existing workforces, but also uh provide holistic education pathways for new workforces. And the Lithgow Transformation Hub and all of the academic uh endowments that that facility brings to our region goes a long way towards identifying what those pathways are and the opportunities they bring. And there's also been uh the investment in development of the Talis Lithgow Arms Facility. But similar to the LEAP project, um the uh REDS document outlines much of the same um uh statistics regarding employment and population locally. And it also in in um ve- very pleasingly, it identifies very similar industries that are potential avenues for Lithgow's growth, um being tourism, electricity generation, transmission and manufacturing being key engine and emerging industries in the Lithgow area. Um so the next steps, it it is still in draft form. Uh we have an opportunity to comment on it. And we will be doing so. It's uh a a rough date is set by the fourth of November, but there is going to be an information session between bureaucracy of Department of Regional New South Wales and council's administration tomorrow so that we can go through in more fine-grained detail what the changes are and then provide a draft, a a fa- uh written feedbacks to the to that um to that document, which will then be uh will run through with the council on on that as well. Prior to any finalisation of the documentation, which is expected in December or um by the end of this year. Um so that's yeah, that's it in conclusion. Are there any questions?
All right, uh thank you, Mr Edgcombe. Um councillor Bryce, would you like to speak to that?
Um the development of this document uh aligning with LEAP will actually set us up for the state government to know where we're going and what we need to do to develop our economy. So again, very exciting. Um it's sad to see that we lost two point two percent of the population. But hopefully we can grow that to um to help our LGA um become a better LGA in the future. But good report, thank you, Jonathan.
Aren't Mr Edgcombe. Thank you councillor Bryce. Councillor O'Connor?
Uh yes, Mayor. I can see the um Great Western Highway upgrade is going to bring a lot of benefits to Lithgow and the central west because of the Western Sydney Airport, everything else that's going on. And also the uh investment in Talis because
Hmm.
being where we are in the world, Anne's manufacturer is going to go bigger and bigger.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Connor. Um any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Marnie?
Uh just a brief comment again. Uh just noting in the two, I I really appreciate, and this is something I think council's been quite good at. This, I'm I'm talking to the staff at this stage, um hopefully us as well. But uh just having the community forums, I think going out and talking to the community about uh significant and consequential changes um really is a is a credit to the staff. So I appreciate that those those elements have been embedded in both these last two reports.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Uh Mr Edgcombe would like just to uh expand on that, thank you.
Uh it's worth mentioning as well that I I did mention a moment ago, um eh which is my error. The the Department of Regional New South Wales hasn't just engaged with council, they've held sessions at the um at the Lithgow Workmen's Club as well. And they've engaged directly with the Chamber of Commerce and other local leaders in 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 our sort of uh industrial outlook as well in terms of getting their thoughts on the process, where Lithgow's uh strengths are, challenges and how Lithgow's grown or struggled over the last four years. So there has been much broader consultation than just council and we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr Edgcombe. Anyone else wishing to speak on that? No, uh write a reply councillor Bryce. Uh just before we put the motion, uh I watched a video the other day that was sent to me uh about Ron Finnymore. And he's very excited about the proposal for the Great Western Highway development. Uh I also heard since then that he's um, you know, quite disappointed. But I think a lot of people are realise that it is something that we need long term. Uh some of the things that I find a little bit confusing is employment and population. We've got a proposition of the population above fifty five years has increased by one for two percent since two thousand eighteen. But yet we're, you know, supposedly two point two population growth since two thousand and eighteen has been negative. Uh I think it's great to see we've got unemployment uh has decreased. And of course, now we have so many people now that would uh, so many people are worried about how they're going to fill their job vacancies. So uh we hope that there's a trending change in this situation. Um I'll put the motion, all those in favour, say aye. Against, carried, thank you. The general manager said councillor Coleman has uh rung in with her apology. Can I have somebody accept that apology, please? Thank you councillor Bryce, the seconda. Thank you councillor McGee. That point four, development of an investment prospectus for Lithgow. Mr Edgcombe?
Last one, I promised, Mayor Statham. Um so uh this is the third project that's been taken, uh that that's in progress uh as a collaborative effort between Department of Regional New South Wales and council and directly speaks to Lithgow's future. Um I forget, I have slides at times. Um. So essentially, and it also aligns with what um uh somewhat with the Seven Valleys concept. Um in in June twenty twenty two, uh representatives of council and the LEAP project, including our consultants, uh attended an investment attraction workshop, uh which was coordinated by the Department of Regional New South Wales. Uh the intent of the program, which again, I I I mentioned before, aligns with the regional economic development strategy and the development of that document and our Lithgow Emerging Economy Plan, is to assist both council and Department of Regional New South Wales to build awareness and recognition of Lithgow as a city. Uh establish direct contact to potential investors in a targeted and strategic fashion. Provide support and services to potential investors. Build relationships with and support existing investors. And provide opportunity to enhance the quality of Lithgow in the eyes of investors. Much of the information that comes from this is also mirrored in both of the economic development strategies mentioned before. But but enough, where it differs is that um these analyses are often developed with the understanding that councils can often pitch the same perceived opportunities in their area as they do their peers, whether it be neighbouring LGAs or otherwise. Uh it 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 can be the case that councils regularly use claims like uh we offer an attractive lifestyle or um we're centrally located or we have high quality labour. And while that might be the case, uh it's i- it is also often the case that your neighbouring council might offer exactly the same thing. And then we have, we uh inevitably and un- unintentionally uh dilute the benefits that we're selling to our investors or potential future investors. Essentially, they're they're much too broad and generic. So the aim of this document is to work alongside LEAP and work alongside REDS, but also uh uh take uh true consideration of Lithgow's competitive and comparative advantages with respect to our peers. And sell and develop those into market strategies that are unique to the Lithgow region that we can take and sell directly to potential investors of the future and use to support existing industry as well. Uh identifying those targeted investors occurs in two parts. The sin firstly, there's the internal assessment of of Lithgow's location, which is what we've done through direct conversation and direct engagement with Department of Regional New South Wales. Uh and we've workshopped in close collaboration the region's strengths, our weaknesses and our opportunities and threats. Uh we've considered what are the concrete opportunities for business in Lithgow's location? Um what are our advantages and opportunities in compa- in uh compared to competitors? And how do we articulate and validate those specific value propositions? Second to that comes an external market assessment, which considers questions like um which sectors and activities are experiencing significant growth? Um if there is investment, where is it occurring and why? Uh and what examples of those are there? So that's i- i- in essence, why it's 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 um extremely beneficial that this is being developed now in con- in collaboration with the LEAP and the REDS. Uh so in terms of um the key endowments and strengths and challenges developed from this project to date, the the draft um the points of discussion at the moment are that we have significant existing heavy electrical infrastructure that is also mirrored in the LEAP and the REDS. Uh we have a close proximity to Sydney being two and a half hours. Our transport connections are unrivaled. We kept the our peers to the eastern west cannot say that they have the same proximity to Sydney, but also the same proximity to Sydney, to the to the central west. It's a very strategic geographic positioning. Uh we have a significant quantity of potential industrial land if brownfield sites, former coal mines and power stations can be repurposed for employment uses. We have significant quantities of water, uh beginning with the six thousand megalitres um uh from late twenty twenty four and increasing uh as coal mines are retired. Obviously, there are some enablers that require the unlocking of that potential, which the administration are working closely with government on identifying potential pathways to navigate that. And um you know, uh shrink that timeframe of of delivering that to that industry. Um uh fifth, there's relatively cheap housing, beginning with um the potential of fifteen hundred lots in Merengaro and uh significant infill development uh uh on the east, on the western side of the highway as well through the South Bowenfells precinct. Uh a cold climate relative to the rest of New South Wales. Um I heard someone mention the other day, which is something that I hadn't actually considered, but data centers require significant cooling. Um Lithgow's temperature is is um is is a significant benefit and could be targeted to those sorts of industries, but also um food preparation and storage. Um there are also opportunities there. Uh proximity to the Blue Mountains workforce, we have um significant advantages in terms of the arts and STEM education as we move to this um move towards Sydney, which we could um couldn't make use of. And uh on on a point councillor McGee made earlier, there is also large volumes of underutilized rail infrastructure and buildings throughout the Lithgow area as well. So identifying those key endowment strengths and challenges is just the first step. The next phase is to identify what those potential investor type groups are and how we can create that value proposition, create that narrative in order to sell Lithgow as in the best possible way. So um uh the 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 document is with us in draft format at the moment. Again, it's open for um for feedback and commentary. And um uh once the, once the document's delivered in its final form, there'll be further presentation to the council as to as to what that looks like.
Thank you for that comprehensive report, Mr Edgcombe. Can I have somebody move this, please? Councillor Bryce and have a second, thank you. Councillor Marnie, thank you. Councillor Bryce?
Um this is a good document, thank you for that, good report. I um it it's great to see that these three presentations, the last three presentations, even the first one, all blend in to our future for our for our LGA. It's it's very exciting times for our LGA. Thanks for that.
Councillor Marnie?
Apologies. Um just again, a really well-considered report that's seen the opportunities, not the constraints of our area. And uh I really appreciate that style of thinking that's coming from council staff in in a number of r- reports we've received over the last twelve months. So um yeah, that 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 certainly, you know, excites me when we see the opportunities, not the limitations. So thank you for your report.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Any other councillors? Councillor Goodwin?
Yes, Mayor Statham. I really think this is exciting and it should be, should have been canvassed years ago. Um we'd be great to see a big multinational investor and other investors uh invest in our town. It's great to see that Lithgow council's looking outwards to companies wanting to invest here. We need to be attractive to the investors. And over my time at council, I've spoken to many developers and investors and all of them value their businesses, brands and name. None of them ever said, I want to come to Lithgow and ruin your town. They all say they want to come and they'll bend over backwards to enhance our town and bring it into the future. It's exciting and if we can attract huge investors, it's a major opportunity for the development of our area.
Yes, that's right councillor Goodwin, exactly. And I also think that because we've got such great proximity to Sydney, there's a lot of other um options that we can take in terms of the highway improving, the Badgers Creek Airport. You know, if anybody's been to Nambuckaheds or get online and have a look at the big service centre up there. Uh I know I keep bringing it up, but it is something that would open up the central west. Uh people like Ron Finneymore, I'd love him to come here and speak as a guest. My brother knows him. Uh I think we need somebody to come here and tell us how they battle with changing over, you know, their trailers. I have never been past Tunnel Hill where I haven't seen at least two trucks, three horse loads or one horse load in a car or something. It's certainly an opportunity that we need to into the future. There are a lot of other priorities at the moment. But I think after we find that uh we get the results of the LEAP prog- project, we can see that there are many other uh things that qualify to think about into the future. Uh councillor Bryce, write a reply? All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, say aye. Thank you, terrific. All right, we just have a couple of brief items on general business. Thank you, Mr General Manager.
Uh yeah, we just thought we'd take this opportunity as we can do in these committees in a a more relaxed manner. Uh just to provide a a quick um overview of four other um projects or or initiatives or activities that are occurring just at the moment that hook uh back to economic development. I'll ask then Mr Edgcombe to speak to them though.
So just in in brief, um the royalties for rejuvenation process. Uh it was mentioned a moment ago, it is a significant opportunity for Lithgow to um uh advocate for some early wins as identified by both the Lithgow Emerging Economy Plan and the Regional Economic Development Strategy Process. Uh so we have um uh when this was initially announced, uh through draft legislation, council um eh council developed a a response to that draft legislation. Um essentially prioritising uh a good good practices of review in terms of measuring outcomes, but also ensuring that there's um good probity pro- processes in place in terms of ensuring that um you know, in- investment is is evenly distributed and 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 ensuring that uh that the the investment that is available is directed to areas of greatest need. So uh after that, uh we also reached out to some key members of our local community to uh to bring awareness to the royalties for rejuvenation process because essentially um it will compro- it comprises, I think it's fourteen separate councils, which have been split into four groups. Um Lithgow's been um grouped with Midwestern council, we are the smallest group. Um and uh each group is over overseen by a panel of experts which feed projects directly to um our deputy prem- premier and and local member. Uh we reached out to um key experts and um uh ac- ac- academics in our community to identify the opportunity for them to become panel members. And uh that process is in train now. Council provided some references to uh when requested as well. So once, once those panels are ratified, which I think is between now and the end of this calendar year, I think, uh they will meet on a regular basis. Uh they will meet on a regular basis to uh consider proposals put forward by council, but also private industry. In uh to facilitate Lithgow's uh diversification particularly. And distribute the funding allocations that it's provided accordingly. Um in order to identify what uh potentially quick wins, we've um we're we're working directly with. Uh the university, uh Western Sydney University and the staff at the Transformation Hub to develop a basic proposal. It's in very draft format at the moment, but a proposal to increase STEM engagement in our public schools. So that we can start creating those holistic pathways from from the start of education through to tertiary. And um and university qualifications if that's needed or, you know, um vet courses or otherwise. To try and uh in- increase um the the capacity of our labour workforce and workforces. To engage directly with those industries of the future. That's just one project, as we move through, we'll be identifying others um and work- workshopping those with the council as well. Uh Main Street Retailing, um I I mentioned that after our um most recent um shop local campaign. Which uh was a initia- initiative brought to us originally by the mayor, by Mayor Statham. Uh but but our view is that we can, this shouldn't be a one-off event, we need to increase our focus. We need to increase our engagement with our local businesses and and work to. Uh not just increase participation of businesses in those shop local campaigns, but also attempt to increase the participation of locals. And and the uh awareness of our visitors in terms of what Lithgow can provide. So we can do that by offering attraction um and promotions, but through uh most recently, our um our campaign. We had uh we we partnered with the um Live and Local uh uh uh, what would you call it? Lo- like the Live and Local Group and um with uh an array of local musi- musicians coming into our main street. Uh and we were fortunate enough to be able to align that with the Australian Caravan Master as well, which was of great benefit. Um and my wife shopped her heart out as well, so I know it was particularly beneficial from from my perspective. Um in terms of events, uh the council's uh in tr- uh very active in this space. Most recently, we've seen uh an incredibly successful Halloween event. Uh I look forward to seeing uh the can uh participating in the eh internal debriefs on that project as to what we can do better next time. How we can im- uh improve participation of local business and industry, but also offer the best opportunities to a community. That is struggling after Covid nineteen and we're uh and are looking to come together through opportunities like this. Uh we also had the benefit of the Caravan Master as well. Um speaking from um uh from a personal perspective, uh my staff, all of council staff, sorry. Put in a great deal of effort to make that event possible. Um but it's worth noting that um through that opportunity, we were able to del- deliver some new permanent infrastructure at Tony Luketti. So that we can uh support more uh events like this and we hope to attract them more often in the future. We hope they had a fantastic time and saw a lot of what Lithgow has to offer. And lastly, we're directly engaging with the organisers of Iron Fest as well to to um uh to speak with them directly. About uh the future of their event and how we can work together if uh to to investigate possible avenues to improve the viability of that event moving forward. Uh and lastly, the Main Street revitalisation, um learning from stage one of that project. Uh we ident- we we acknowledge that um we could have done better with community consultation and the design process there. So this year, we've set aside a full twelve months uh to 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 work on that detailed design. And consult with um business owners and members of our community on what the Main Street revitalisation looks like. And how the construction is phased. Um we want to, as much as reasonably practicable, uh reduce uh any um uh adverse effects. To businesses by avoiding uh key shopping periods like Christmas. But you know, it it is a massive construction project, it is inevitable that we will have impact. We just need to make sure that that is broadly communicated and understood by our business community prior. But in terms of quality outcomes, we we hope that the refresh of the Main Street. Will um make the area more enticing to our locals, more enticing to visitors. Uh but we also hope for uh more practical outcomes as well in terms of um being able to deliver an asset that can be easily disturbed. Because all of our um, all of our services run underneath the footpath and then restored um promptly as well. And left in a similar status before, which isn't the case with our current assets. So we'll be communicating broadly um uh through direct consultation with our businesses. We'll hold community information sessions as well um and hope to, that this is the start of a a a really good. Um project for the community.
Thank you, Mister Edgcombe, that was a another terrific report, just to keep us up to date with the council's what is going on in our district. I had the opportunity to speak to the Hoskins family at length on Sunday and they'd heard there was something happening at Blast Furnace. So they've asked for invitations to Lithgow's uh Lith Glow next year when it's at Blast Furnace. Yes, uh they're very excited about the prospect that they could go there and see what's happened to that site. Um any further questions from any councillors?
It's just a matter of.
General Business?
Is this an opportunity to just comment on on the minutes of the last council, of the last committee meeting? And in 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 specifically, the the Hassan's Wells Trails Running Event. Uh I know it was briefly reported to a council meeting, but I was just wondering if we could get an update on that. And and just exactly if if there's any planning or currently happening for the event next year.
Uh yeah, that that's, I did briefly read through the minutes, but unfortunately I didn't attend the last meeting. Um we will take that on notice and provide an update to the to the broader council with some more information regarding the status of the trail running event.
Thank you, Council uh Council Lesley and thank you, Mister Edgcombe, anyone else wishing to speak? No, I'll close the meeting at seven forty, thank you all for attending and thank you to the staff. Again, they've done a mighty job, thank you. Oh, the first item, yes, uh five point one, could I have somebody, I just want to put the motion please, thank you, Council Bryce, seconded. Councilor Goodwin, all those in favour say aye. Oh, I did have moved it and seconded and we had a lot of discussion, but I I said where I had put the motion, but it was remiss of me, I moved on to the next item. That's just, that was just a formality, thank you, Council Lesley. All right, thank you all for coming, the meeting is now closed, thank you.